Charlie, here's the 100-foot, what we dealt with earlier today. The subject.
Our bylaw has all those setbacks. If it's a protected area up here, the rest of the bylaw.
No, but it says it right here. Oh, it's on, a minimum, a 25-foot minimum undisturbed vegetated buffer zone will be required to protect wetlands and wildlife.
And I'll take some responsibility. We just needed to probably have a better dialogue of what was going on.
The houses are built, and I never noticed it, nobody noticed it. We wrote an order of conditions and then it was an error to begin.
No, sir.
But the resource area, let's get to that now. The civics are compliant except for lot seven. You're not going to get one because you haven't straightened out that resource area.
It was an RDA, so we don't need one on lot seven, right?
Well, you tried, you applied in June for four lots. This is three lots that are able to issue certificates of compliance on. But Matt's lot, lot seven. When are you going to submit a plan to the commission?
Well, this is the decision, I mean, you started reading the letter. This is the decision that you made with respect to that. And we proposed a plan, and you approved it. And the plan dictates what's supposed to be done. We've all read these words, you know, that the restricted area be replanted with ornamental deciduous and evergreen shrubs, ground covers, mulches, et cetera, more suitable to a landscape situation and more compatible with its location next to the well.
But it hasn't happened.
So, we obviously had a misunderstanding about what we were trying to accomplish there. You're hoping to accomplish basically a landscape bed, somewhat to what's planted in the front of Dr. Carrera's house.
That's what that says. That's his plan, suitable for a landscape?
Right. I assumed, and this is, this is part of what we presented at that time, it's a restoration plan for restriction area D, which indicated that we would regrade the side slope to an even gentle embankment. Now you want me to fill the entire thing in.
Are we talking about the same lot?
Mm-hmm. This is restrict, that's restriction area D. Is that 2,200 square foot area that we're talking about on lot seven. Add clean loam topsoil, reseed with native seed mix, E.G. New England Conservation Wildlife Mix. You don't want that, you want wood chips. Install new silt fencing along easterly boundary of restriction area D.
What did you say when you applied for the RDA? You just read it. Read it again. Mulch, suitable plants for landscape for our house. So, why are you bringing that up? That has nothing to do with the conversation we're having.
Well, this is what, you mentioned that we had submitted a plan to you.
That's not what you said in the RDA, that you were going to submit.
Well, this is what we submitted, and then that was followed up by you issuing this.
We never would have approved it if that were, I wouldn't approve that that is what you were proposing.
Why?
It doesn't come anywhere near what you said you were going to do. Mulch, suitable plants for landscape design. You're just talking about grass there.
This is part, this is part of a NHESP-protected area, which is supposed to be.
Oh, well, that's NHESP, so that's not what we're dealing with. We're dealing with the area that you damaged, and you said you were going to do a suitable restoration.
Which is part of the, the area we damaged is part of the NHESP.
I'm not caring about what NHP said, what you wrote to NHP. It's what you promised us. You promised us mulch, pearly plants, shrubs, suitable for landscape area. That's what you promised.
I didn't promise mulch. My point is, I presented this.
To NHESP.
We agreed, no, to you, to this board. I had to come before you and present a restoration plan, which I did, which was this. That's what we submitted.
But that's not what you said you were going to present.
We voted, and then you issued this after the fact, which is different than this. That's why there's confusion. Never mind the fact that.
It's more confusing than anybody.
Never mind the fact that we're supposed to be restoring Eastern Box Turtle habitat. That's what the area is all about.
Yeah.
And rather than.
You destroyed that.
Well, that's right, but there's a plan for restoring it when accidents happen. I'm sure at some point.
Well, you took trees down and all that stuff. You want to plant trees back?
Listen, there's, I mean, like, I'm not just asleep at the switch here. There's protocol for this stuff. I have no problem. I made a mistake. I'm willing to fix it.
When?
But what's, but what's happened is, you've gone and changed your tune because Mr. Carrera barks up your tree every day, and he's annoyed you to no end. So now, rather than restore it to be in an Eastern Box Turtle habitat, you want to have me turn it into a landscape garden.
Eastern Box Turtle would call around on the mulch.
No, they.
They do in the woods.
Really?
Yeah.
You should read this, because it clearly says that if there's any mulch in the NHESP Eastern Box Turtle areas.
They call around their weaves all the time.
It's to be removed. Remove the mulch. They don't like it.
They don't like it, huh?
So because I made a mistake.
The commission has agreed to a restoration proposal from Mr. Antonio, that the restricted area be replanted with ornamental deciduous and evergreen shrubs, ground covers, mulches, et cetera, more suitable to a landscape situation and more compatible with its location next to the dwelling. He further proposes to delineate the conservation restriction area with six permanent markers evenly distributed along the perimeter. That's not what you.
Which we did. We did that. Those markers are in place today. The plants, the plants are in place. I mean, at the end of the day, the main difference between what you ordered and what I did is I didn't fill the area in to bring it up to grade. That's what you told me you'd like me to do.
You shouldn't have damaged it to begin with.
I understand that.
Let's get it straight.
I'm sorry about that. I understand that. It's a mistake.
Well, now, how are you going to compensate for it?
Well, we should restore it.
We're asking for restoration. You told, you gave us a planned restoration. You haven't delivered. When do you deliver?
The plan to restore should be consistent with the Eastern Box Turtle habitat. That's the whole point of this area. That's the whole point of it.
Okay. What is the recommended restoration plan for the Box Turtle?
It's a totally natural habitat, underbrush.
Which you destroyed.
That's right.
But he's, but let's, so we can. I'm asking him now a question.
It can be replicated, no different than when you have a wetland crossing or something, and you need to do a wetland replication area like we did at the entrance to the subdivision.
You took down big trees.
There we did, there were no large trees there.
You stripped all the soil from that area.
No, we didn't.
Where are the trees? How did the roots, stumps come out?
Listen, in that area, you can clear, there's a stone wall. You can clearly see where the original grade is.
There were trees outside the stone wall.
We didn't, we didn't strip soil out of it. We filled in the yard next to it when we built the septic system. It goes from the yard.
How did you get the stumps out of the ground?
Down to the stone wall.
They're gone. There were trees there.
Not large trees.
Not much, but there were trees there. I didn't take pictures, you didn't take pictures, but I know there were trees there. And not seven inches tall. There were trees, substantial trees. They're gone.
So, my point is, planting a landscape bed with mulch and bushes like you see across the front of somebody's house is not a proper restoration of an Eastern Box Turtle habitat.
And these were planting grass.
Well, yes, it is.
So.
That's, that's part of it.
You proposed, and we accepted, your proposal. For shrubs suitable for landscape situation, mulches, vines, whatever you want to put in there, make it look like a, like a decent place, like, not the crap hole it is right now.
I agree that it doesn't look good now. It looks uncapped, but that.
It hasn't looked good since you started the project. That's how long now, Matt? That could have been all gone and forgotten by now. But no, if the leak is on, festers like an old pusill. It's crazy.
Because what you're asking for is not, it's not consistent.
We're asking for restoration. You proposed restoration. We accepted your restoration. That's what we want. That's what I want. I don't know about the other members, but that's what I want.
What I, how many square feet is this?
2,250.
And is this connected to another contiguous area to the back?
Uh, no, actually.
Not to the back, to the side.
This particular area.
You know, I'm picturing this, it's on the left-hand side as you're driving in, correct?
It's silly, isn't it? Yes, but toward the end of the subdivision. I mean, it never should have been included, to be honest with you. It's like a silly little chunk. I don't know why it was included, but.
Is that the whole plan right there?
Oh, it's in here somewhere. That's, that's the conservation restriction. This one that shows just the restoration areas. This is the subdivision.
Is that true?
Yeah, he's got it right here. That's the, that's the one, huh?
I need to exclude you guys, but all of these areas shown in gray are the NHESP conservation restricted areas for the purpose of creating Eastern Box Turtle habitat. This is lot seven, which is the lot in question. This whole back area is like a nice chunk. That makes sense. There's good contiguous space there. This little piece right here, this is not my property. This is, this is, this is somebody else on, like.
But there's, there's no houses over here, and this.
No, it's just woods.
That would be Box Turtle too, so that's probably, that's probably part of some other.
Right. It's conceivable to think that if they're living in here, they could sneak into there.
Yeah, okay.
There's a stone wall that runs along this property line. So what happened was, we had this, before we started construction, we had to have this entire area trenched, silt fenced, and marked out with 18 signs.
Okay, all right, wait, I want to go back to your, to your stone wall. You got, there's a stone wall on the, this is the west end?
Yes.
Okay, so this will be north.
Yeah.
Um, east, south, okay. So there is a stone wall between this area and the west end. So that stone wall blocks off.
Jim, Jim, Jim.
Blocks off everything from, from here to there.
You're right. It runs right along this property line. The stone wall is on the property line for lot seven.
Okay, all right, all right. You know.
And so what happened is, we had the whole thing located, survey located, then we trenched and installed the silt fence. We put in the signs. We called in for an inspection before we started our work. It was inspected and approved. Can we start our work? This little section was missed, and I think it's, I mean.
It's a 2,000 square feet. All right, wait, wait, you have something in place already as far as paperwork.
Right.
Um, to do the, the grass, the, um, the shrubs, the whatever. That, that's what, that's what you, you gave them in writing. Yes or no? Just, I want a yes or no.
He, he proposed that.
And we accepted.
We accepted it, yes.
Okay. Why don't you just do that? Since that area is already separated by a wall that turtles to my interpretation.
They're not going to cross the wall.
I'm not going to cross the wall. If you just do what is on that paper, what your proposal initially was.
On this one.
And get it done, and we can rectify this and solve this problem. Rather than looking at spreading leaves, doing whatever else, do what is on that paper because the turtles aren't going to climb over. I don't know any turtles.
I totally agree with that.
I don't know any turtles that are going to climb over that wall.
Agreed.
Going to go through the wall, going to burrow under the wall.
Agreed.
And then, and then we can, we can clear up lot seven.
My concern is, and if I can try to clarify, I made a proposal at a meeting. This board listened to it, voted on it, and accepted it, and then, days later, which is appropriate, followed up with a written decision.
No.
I didn't write this.
We don't have a copy of it, not fully.
Well, it's on your letterhead. I, I mean, I didn't write this. This is from the town of Dyken Conservation Commission. It was sent to me from you.
Okay, I, I don't know anything about that, but if you've got that other one.
My point is, the two are not consistent, and, and that my fear, my fear, just hear me out for one more minute. My fear is that I'm also beholden to NHESP here. So if I go and do this, and it satisfies you, I'm good with you, and I'm good with the Carreras and everybody's happy. What if NHESP comes down and says, wait a minute?
Would you like us to get involved with NHESP?
I just want to get it right.
Would you like us to get NHP involved in that, restoring that area?
Whatever it takes to get it right.
Okay.
It should be done, it should be done right.
So, you're not concerned that you damaged the area, and you're not willing to make any kind of restoration?
My, my point is, if you're going to spend the money to restore it, shouldn't you do it properly and do it once? Because if I do it a certain way, and I spend the time and the money, and then it's not right, who's going to redo it again?
Why didn't you, you propose something like this right at the get-go? This is one of those last-minute operations. Can I get out of it? That's what it seems to me.
No, my, my point is that what I proposed to the board.
I will send NHP an official letter from this commission with their approval, telling them what the circumstances are, what we propose, and we'll see where it goes.
Sure. That's fair.
Then Matt will have to settle with whatever decision is, comes from.
Whatever decision.
The other agency.
Well, whatever satisfies, I mean, you got to satisfy both agencies. Both agencies have a.
Because they also say that if you.
I'll go with either one. I'll go with either.
In their conditions.
Well, no, I mean, if that's.
Have you got a copy of their conditions there?
The NHESP conditions?
Yes.
I don't, no, for the subdivision approval.
It just so happens to land.
No, no, but, but if we, if they, if they wanted it some way, we can accept their way, and then that would be, and that would, that would solve the problem.
This is the, the conditions that they issued for the property.
But we're talking, we're talking about the general overall area, not the little part that is segregated by the.
Apparently, they, they got that little area to fill in whatever square footage they wanted as conservation restricted area because of the acreage that they were going to develop. They have a ratio.
Seventy percent.
They give you some square footage and they take some square footage.
Oh, 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 I see what you're saying. So they, so they needed square footage.
They needed 20, 250 square feet.
The funny part is, if you take the 2,200 square feet out, we still meet the regulation. You need a minimum of 70% of the land to be restricted. We ended up restricting 73.2% with the 2,250.
Condition number 12 of NHESP's conditions. A violation of any condition of this conservation and management permit will result in an unauthorized take pursuant to NAST General Law C 131A and may be subject to civil and/or criminal penalties pursuant to MGLC 131A. I mean.
Okay.
You did damage the area.
Agreed.
So you are subject to this.
Absolutely, yes.
You're willing to take the chance.
I, listen, I think the appropriate thing to do is to find out what the proper restoration would be.
The appropriate thing to do, if you were, if you wanted to, was to do what you promised to do to begin with, and we wouldn't be signing all these laws and violations. It is a violation. It's a take. How they're going to feel about it, I have no idea. And if you're willing to take the gamble, so am I. Doesn't matter to me. It's going to matter to Matt, but it's not going to matter to me.
Well, yeah, I mean, right now I'm bankrupt anyways because I have five unbuildable lots in that subdivision.
If you get your foot in the bucket and you can't get it out, it's not going to come out.
Listen, I, my point is that it needs to be done correctly.
That's our point too, but it's not.
A mistake was made. I understand that.
Okay.
I proposed.
And you were willing to rectify it according to your.
Yes.
And we approved the rectification.
So I hired my consultant, who's an Eastern Box Turtle expert, and asked him to come up with a proposal to restore that area. I presented it to this board, and what you sent back as your decision is inconsistent with what I proposed. That's my point. The two things are inconsistent with each other.
Why did you make the original proposal? This was at the, the meeting, when you, the RDA. The minutes say you said this.
Right, because we actually, this area was impacted during construction of the road, not during construction of the house. So by the time we had come in for the RDA for the house, that area had already been disturbed. You were already aware of it, so we were handling two things at one time. It was an RDA to get a building permit for the house, and it was a plan to restore restriction area D, which was disturbed during construction of the road. So it was, it was a two-pronged approach, and it was all summarized in this one decision.
The house is separate from the, we issued an order of conditions for the road building.
Right.
Right. The house is a completely different order of conditions.
I understand.
So why are we beating that horse and this horse? We approved the project. We issued an order of conditions for the project. You followed all the conditions that we issued for the road building. The way you went astray was when you were working on the lot. We, we had an RDA. We issued two conditions to it, under our bylaw. And you, you proposed to make good for the damage you did, or your contractor did, but you're responsible in the end anyway. And we accepted your proposal. You've been unwilling to honor your proposal all this time. You've been beating around the bush, citing all kinds of little things to try to get out of it.
My proposal is not, is not what's reflected in this letter. That's my point.
That's not the proposal that we accepted at the RDA. I don't care what your consultant said. I don't have a copy of that, but.
What?
You went in there and planted little things like that.
No, no, but what, um.
No, no grass, no mountain. That, that looks terrible.
But we put the native wildlife mix in.
Well, the only thing.
145 bucks a pound, or whatever it was.
And if they're willing to kiss it off, then you and Matt can go to court and do whatever you want. I don't care. We're just trying to get what you promised to give us, and you still don't want to give it.
You know, I, I don't appreciate that you keep saying that, because what I proposed.
What else am I supposed to say? How long have we been doing this?
What I proposed to do is not what you wrote in your decision. What I promised to do.
What we proposed to do.
Is different than what you wrote in your decision.
What you promised you would do.
So you're calling it a liar, and that's not the case.
What, what is it? Let me see what you promised to do, or what you say, okay. Let me just.
We did not love to.
Okay, regrade slope to an even gentle embankment. Add clean loam topsoil and reseed with native seed mix, New England Conservation. Install new siltation fence along eastern boundary of restricted area D. Follow stabilization and revegetation, including budding development areas on lot seven. Install permanent markers on easterly corner point of restricted area D to define the boundaries and maintain lawn landscaped area on lot seven, restricted area D. So according to this here, you're going to regrade and plant grass only.
That was the plan that we had proposed. Then during discussion, the board said, hey, we'd like to see some, and this language is correct, some deciduous and evergreen shrubs that are consistent with the surroundings.
Okay, yeah.
And I said, sure, I'll do that. That was a negotiation that happened at the meeting.
Yeah.
And I, I did that. We didn't stipulate as to the size or whatever, and Mr. Mello's disappointed in the size of the shrubs that I put in. But I put in 26 or so shrubs, plus one tree. The biggest issue that I see, to be honest with you, is, is filling it. Mr. Mello's asked me to fill it, because right now it slopes off toward the bottom of the wall. He wants to fill it in so it's a more, more consistent with the pitch of the yard, and putting mulch down. Because the mulch is like a specific no-no for Eastern Box Turtle habitat, and I think I could, I could do everything but the mulch and the fill, and I'll hold my head high with NHESP if it ever became an issue.
So you want to leave the depression, put seed, and what, what surviving plants do you have there now? Or is anything surviving after the stroke?
I haven't gone to look specifically, to be honest with you. I haven't walked the property to see.
So Charlie, what the, the difference here then is, is no fill, leave, leave the contour as, as is. Seed and revegetate existing contour, natural contour.
He wants to seed it with wildlife mix. Matt's got a lawn right adjacent to that. That looks like a lawn.
The important thing to note is that from the get-go, with the owners of this property, that area was always, in fact, I have their signature on the plan.
That's true. If we would have left it alone.
It was always noted as, hey.
They would have to accept that.
You can't, you can't touch over here. It can't be your yard. It can't be this. You can't build on it, et cetera.
But you touched it.
I understand that, sir. I made a mistake.
But you're making this pitch.
Okay, wait, 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 let's, let's. Sometimes I make mistakes. Apparently, you don't ever make mistakes at work, but I was at work and I made a mistake. I'm sorry.
I accept your apology, and I'm glad you're sorry. Now we're trying to solve the problem.
Exactly.
And it's not getting solved, man.
Right.
All right. So what we have right now is still a contoured piece of property, 2,200 square feet.
Actually, it's more than that now. That's a lot more than 2,200 square feet. The depression, the same now?
Oh, no, it's 2,250 square feet. We've had it all noted and marked. This, this plan, if you want to take a look at this, this probably illustrates the situation a little better when you're not looking at it every day. This is the septic system as-built plan. And so it shows the road, the house. This is that area here. It's like a very slim area. And so the grade of the yard, Carrera's driveway comes in like this, and everything pitches this way. It's a very gentle slope through his yard until you get to this dotted line.
And then it goes down.
And then it dips down, I'd say.
Goes down to its natural.
Three, three and a half feet or so to meet the bottom of this wall.
Well, okay, so, so he's not, he's doesn't, he's not going to care whether, what, what's growing there? Trees grow there, and in five years, he's, it's not going to be a problem. Am I hitting that right?
It is a problem for me.
Well, he wants it turned into a landscape area with mulch beds and plantings, which I, I understand why he does. It would look much better. It would look much better. But if for some reason NHESP or the DEP goes down there and looks at it, and they see this landscaped area in an area that's supposed to be part of the conservation restriction area.
Maybe they'll like it. Maybe they'll consider it a pretty good deal. I'm willing to do that. If they like it, I'll like it. Matt don't have to like it.
My, the only thing I'd have to hang my hat on at that point would be, hey, I did what the Dyken Conservation Commission told me to do. Made a mistake, and I did what they said. And I don't mind, I could just, I mean, I've talked to Dr. Schluter there a number of times at the NHESP. I could just ask her, say, hey, you know, I made a mistake. It's a really small area. What do you think? That this is what the Conservation Commission wants to do. I just want to make sure it's consistent with what you think is okay.
So you're willing to let the NHESP be the arbiter of this problem, or will we continue to pick a half a day? Either don't or do.
No, I, I honestly, I have a feeling that if I did that, if I approached her with this, she would, because she's had, I've had a number of nice conversations with her, she'd probably say, you know what, just follow what the Dyson Conservation Commission wants to do. They're the local experts, blah, blah, blah. Okay, all right, all right. She'd probably say, if I don't have to go to work... Okay. Here's, here's what I, here's what I would like to do. Here's what I would like to do. Since you seem to have a good rapport with her, am I correct? Yes. Call her. Yep. Have her email or fax you her reply. Sure, okay. And then get it to us, and then we will agree.
How about you just copy it?
I can email her. You know, I have her email, so I could do it. And that way, there's a nice written record of it. That's what I'm looking for, a record. Yep. Doesn't have to be... And then that record will go into our file, so that if there's any comeback, we have the file. I won't even make it a big deal. I'll send her this, and I'll just say, hey, just want to bring this to your attention. We made a mistake. This is what we've decided. This is what the Conservation Commission would like me to do. Could you just read through it quickly and tell me that it's okay with NHESP?
Good idea.
And hopefully she'll just write back and say, yeah, that looks good. And then I'm coming.
And then you'll do it?
Then I'll do it. I mean, at this point, we're...
That's the part we're having a hard time with, getting it done.
At this point, we're doing it in the spring, but I, you don't want to... Really? Okay. All right, let's, let's, yeah, that would have to be done in March, probably. By the time I get a response from her. You know, I, I was trying to line it up to where we could do it right now, but you're really, I don't know. Well, it's still, we're still drought. I mean, to do anything now, I mean, I was just out in the woods before I came here, and it's, it's, it's powder. We're lucky these forests aren't aflame. Right, right. Because there's just no moisture out there.
Well, I feel like I'm glad you came in tonight, Matt. It's been a pleasure. I'm serious.
Pardon me for laughing. You know, it's...
It comes to some kind of a resolution. We haven't been able to get a resolution.
It took me a long time to, to figure out all the, pretty different lots, what the argument was.
May have tried, then keep it, and then avoid it all this time. Now we finally got the point where we, we can settle this.
I think we're good on Lot 7. If you want to issue certificates of compliance on those three lots...
It's got nothing to do with that.
That'd be great. No, 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 but, but he was... Those are the issues that we discussed. Three, four, and six. Issue of, are we, are we all set with three, four, and six?
Yes.
I move that we, uh, issue certificate of compliance for lots three, four, and six.
I said, are you gonna issue a complete certificate? You're gonna issue a complete certificate of compliance?
Well, it's gonna be, it's gonna be...
It'll still be a partial certificate of compliance.
Well, then you have to say that. You can't just say a certificate of compliance.
That's true.
I move that we order a partial certificate of compliance for lots three, four, and six. Why, why partial?
Because we have perpetual conditions that have to do with drainage and other things.
But that would still, whether it's partial and are full, it's still gonna go through.
If it's a perpetual condition, it's only a partial certificate, because it's in perpetuity. It goes from homeowner to homeowner to homeowner.
But it's on the deed. It's gonna be on the homeowner to homeowner anyway. If I can make a quick comment on this, 'cause I, I, again, I just want to do it the right way.
But do it the right way. It's a partial certificate of compliance.
There's, there's the recorded plan that shows the restricted areas. It's on every deed in the subdivision, and those run in perpetuity.
You record the conditions, sir.
But when I submit a notice of intent, it's me saying to this board, I'm gonna do construction out there. Here's what I'm gonna do, and when I'm done, I'm gonna come back.
That's not the way it is. You say what you want to do. We listen to what you want to do, and then we issue a condition in order, either approving all of your, what you plan to do, or approving it with conditions.
If, if it's a partial, it would just have to be very specific, because the folks, the folks that own these properties, you know, at the closing, they run the title search. They see the notice of intent and the order of conditions, and they say, hey, you need to get these resolved. We need certificates of compliance. And I say, okay...
It's time to argue what the conditions is at the time they're issued.
Well, I'm not, I'm not debating the conditions. I just want to make sure that we properly discharge what needs to be discharged on the title to these people's properties. They already own them. I don't want them to have a title. So, so if we say that, that they're gonna be, um, in perpetuity, that, that should be sufficient to say that that the certificate of compliance will be issued?
No, it isn't, because when it changes from owner to owner, it doesn't necessarily have to carry that with it. If it's, certificate of compliance is partial, those perpetual conditions are preserved.
Why can't we just say, oh, okay.
That's D B's requirement, not mine.
Let me ask you something, just out of curiosity. When you have, uh, like a wetland filing, and somebody comes in and files a notice of intent, and you issue an order of conditions, they build the house, they're done. They come back in and ask for a certificate of compliance, do you give a, a partial, or do you give a full?
No, if there's no perpetual conditions, they get a complete certificate.
Well, isn't it a perpetual condition that they have to observe the wetland buffer and the resource areas?
Yeah, if there are, if there are perpetual conditions, they all get treated the same. They, it carries right on.
You're probably right. I mean, I, I just, I want to make sure that their title is clear. I'm gonna have to send it to their, to their attorneys.
I think you're confusing the fact that there are state regulations that protect the buffer zones on wetlands that don't have to be part of conditions. This subdivision has specific conditions because of the conservation...
Their plan already has, the plan that's accompanying the deed already has all the written resource areas on it, and the conditions just contain to those.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
The hundred-foot buffer will be the same forever, no matter who buys the house.
Right. Which is a state regulation, so...
Okay, let me reiterate that. Uh, I, I move that we order a, that we issue a partial certificate of compliance on lots three, four, and five.
Six.
Three, four, and, three, four, and six. Three, four, and six. No, not seven. Three, four, and six.
Or six.
For properties on Myers Lane.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye. Okay. I'm gonna send an email to NHESP. And hopefully we can get that taken care of. If, as soon as you get it back, uh, we can deal with it, and if, if it's as... Just...
Will you copy us? Copy us?
On the email? Sure.
With the emails in both directions.
I have your email. I'll copy you. Yeah.
Good.
And on the next building permit, I'm gonna reach out to the board so we can go out there and discuss where the no-touch zone is. Then we might end up in court anyway.
Yeah, I mean, this twenty-five-foot buffer thing is a huge bone of contention, and that's like a big, that's a big deal.
We can discuss that at another time.
Can't go on for too long, because like, it's a big deal. It's a huge deal. Somehow that's gotta get, that's gotta get squared away.
If the condition decides to give you redress, it's by members, not just me. I'm only one guy. But we'll, when it's official, then that's when you deal with it.
I think what I'll probably do is submit a plan then for one of these lots soon. Asking for, you know, a notice of intent and a plan, and we'll see what the board decides. Very good. All right.
Thank you, Matt.
Have a good night.
Good night, too.
Okay, so you, you got these three here?
Those are mine, yeah.
Yeah, those are yours, okay.
Jim, can't leave. I need you. Okay. I know it's late, and I apologize.
It's all right. No, no, we've been, it's okay. We were up late last night, too.
I know. I stood up way too late last night. I couldn't...
I think we all did, yeah.
Sorry, Billy.
Yeah, I, I shared it to you. I have a problem, fairly big problem, that I need some assistance with from, from you, your board.
Do you have a copy of the email chain? I had to get a better idea of what he's talking about.
I'm not sure if you've had a chance to read it yet, but I can surmise for you.
Yes, please do.
Okay. A few weeks ago, I got a call from Peter Marigan at the Mount Hold, uh, at the mill down in Mount Hold Village.
Yep.
His fire pump's cistern went dry, so he was concerned about firefighting, uh, in the mill complex. So I visited the site with Tom Ferry, and sure enough, the drought had caused a condition where we had no water for the fire pump, which helps the complex in case of a fire. We discussed options. The cistern was damaged. It's old. It's, it's, it's aged. But in the interim, we ordered a flow test on the municipal water supply to see if we had adequate water to fight fires in the mill. That came back that we do not have adequate water to fight fires in the mill, so, from the municipal water supply. So we discussed what we could do in order to protect Mount Hold Village in the event that we had a catastrophic mill fire. I don't know if you know, but that mill is ninety percent occupied. There's very little space. They're doing exceptionally well. So, um, we met with the fire chief. The fire chief was gonna order a fire watch until Mother Nature or something else came to light. We talked about pumping water into the cistern. We talked about all kinds of options. As if there was a higher power, the rains came, and like this, the cistern filled up. Only you'd think that we would be in great shape when the cistern filled up, because we had adequate water for our fire pump. Well, they tried to lower the gate when it was dry so that we could try to retain as much water in the cistern as possible. When they did that, it breached some of the wall on the cistern. So now, flow has been resumed to the cistern, and this is all fresh within the last week or so. And now we've got breaches in the cistern where this thing may collapse. So I reached out to Charlie because I didn't know what type of emergency measures could be taken. They have a contractor who I met there just two days ago, who's willing to rebuild his cistern without going into the water bed. He can stay out of the waterway. But Charlie looked up the regulations, and there's, there's no emergency allowances that he's aware of that would allow us to do the work and simultaneously file with your board. So I'm here to ask what the board can do, if anything, for us, so that we can try to get this thing fixed.
Okay. Where, where is the cistern?
So I have, I have a color plan for you.
I know where it is. Well, I don't. I just want to... I have to talk about that, Jim. Oh, okay.
So...
Okay, all right.
So I circled it there in red. Here's the dam. There's a diversion channel that comes through here underground, and then you can actually see the outflow in this, in this picture. So the out, you can see where it's set back pretty far off the river. Um, it's got a spillway where it comes out into the river after it goes through the gate.
Okay.
Right here. You can see that little, that's the spillway.
Okay, so now, uh, is there water coming over the dam now?
Right now, yes.
Oh, wow, because down, down below, there's almost nothing.
Right. It's barely coming over, but it's coming over. I'll tell you, when I called Charlie on this, I, I told him, I have a great admiration for our forefathers. Our forefathers were brilliant, because that dam can dry up, and we can still get water in our cistern. So it's just, it's just that we've had a catastrophic drought this year where...
And it's getting, it's going bad again.
Right. So I need some guidance, because I, I'm inclined, under the emergency conditions, to, to, to tell him to fix the thing and, and file simultaneously, but I don't want to step on any toes on the board, so I, I need some help. My, my concern is if we do nothing, and we, we go through the filing process, which they intend to do, if we have some kind of rain event, this thing may breach. Now I'm back to square one, where I've got a fire watch on a mill. And if something happens, I don't want to be the one on the camera saying, you know, we could've fixed this.
Charlie, if the, why can't we have them do it and file at the same time, and, and, uh, I mean, they're not going into the river. They're not going, uh, they're just working within the cistern, uh, which is, uh, it, it, that would be no different than, than a repair to a septic system, to a, to a house that's along the bank of the Titan River.
Let me, uh, let me ask Jim some questions.
Sure.
Jim, what, what is breach? What part of the dam breach? Is it the planks?
No, there's no planks. That's a...
Yeah, there is.
No, no, it's not a dam.
No, it's the cistern.
I know where this is. I bet you were standing right there looking inside of it, so I ain't the one I'm talking about, Jim.
The planks, the planks, the planks are not, not what's the problem.
Well, what's the problem?
You know where the gatehouse is?
Yeah.
Okay. When it goes down inside, there's a metal gate.
Yeah.
Above the gate, where the concrete is, that's what's breached. So above the gate...
That's what I want to know.
And you know the runners that go down where the gate is? That's breached as well. So I've got like three areas where water's coming through right now.
Okay, so it's, it's, it's a, the steel, the steel track or gates, you, or whatever you want to call it, has, has busted, broken through.
Right.
The concrete has busted through. So in order to repair it, they'll have to remove them tracks.
Yep.
Re, re, reinforce some concrete and reinstall the tracks.
If you know what it looks like, and for those who don't, there's a head wall where the, where the supply comes from, and then the fire pump draws off the bottom of the cistern. There's three walls that go out towards the river where the spillway is. This is set back off the river a little ways. Those three walls are what's gonna be replaced. I'm gonna replace those three walls and put a brand-new gate, gate in, in its place.
So all they gotta do is they gotta put some forms in for the concrete.
That's right. The head wall's gonna stay. We're not gonna touch the head wall. It's, it's in great shape, and there's, there's a lot of infrastructure there that we, we don't want to get involved with. So it's a fairly permanent fix. It's not like it's a Band-Aid for a year. It's a fairly permanent fix. But the concern is, is real about, you know, we, there's, there's a sense of urgency here to get this done. We all know what mills do when they catch fire. So, and we've had fires in that mill before. There's a, there's a generator, starter, alternator rebuilding plant there on the second floor.
I know all about the mill planks on the floor.
Yeah.
Oil, saturated oil for the last two hundred years.
So I mean, I mean, Peter Marigan is a stand-up guy. He's, he's willing to, you know, to do the filing right away, but he's concerned, he's got a contractor who's, who can get in there. There's a window that's available to get the contractor in there. Mother Nature's sort of cooperated so far. We do have some water that's available. They plan to have a pump available to feed the fire pump while construction's going on. So there's, there's, there's a pretty good plan in place. I'm, I'm confident with all the players. I just want to make sure that this board is, is in the loop, and, and, and we do things correctly.
I take it some power to get it done.
I think go for it, to get it done before, uh, before...
Before it gets more rain.
We're gonna get some big, heavy rains, someday, obviously. Uh, we're not gonna have, right now, we're not gonna get any rain until at least next Wednesday. But, so you got a dry period coming up now.
So there's water back in it again?
There is right now.
So how's, what's the plan to hold the water back while you guys are...
Uh, the plan is to block off the inlet channel and have pumps available to feed the fire pump when, while the channel dries out. Right, exactly.
Okay.
Now, he, I spoke with Peter today. Peter was gonna come tonight, but I didn't think that was, um, uh, needed. I'm glad I didn't have him come. But he's got the contractors ready to go as soon as I give the call. So what I'd like to do, if the board's inclined, is have Peter come in and get the filing going with you guys, and, uh, and, and give the contractor the go-ahead. And if there's anything you want done out there, I urge you to come out and, and look at it and tell me what you want.
Uh, well, I'm, I'm inclined to say, fix it, file it, file and, uh, post-mortem.
Okay, okay.
And you know, certainly the wrong word, but, uh...
No, yeah, post-mortem.
But file and just say, emergency situation, and that, and then by that time, if DEP's gonna complain, it's gonna be all done.
Right.
They'll, they'll, they can come and blame me.
Yeah, no, no, I have no problem putting my name on paper in a letter to your board as the inspector buildings and saying, this, this had to happen. So I have no problem doing that.
Okay.
Could you put that in the motion so I can recall it?
Okay, uh, let's see now. All right. I, I'm, if I make a motion to give Dyson Industries permission to repair the cistern and file at the same time, okay, I, I move that we give Dyson Industries permission to repair the fire cistern and make up...
While the process of filing.
Well, if, for, yes, for emergency purposes.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, boy.
Go tomorrow. Get it started tomorrow.
Thank you, boy. I appreciate your, uh, your help.
Okay. Hundred-foot, um, uh, septic system buffer zone in the well. You must have, you have a copy of our bylaw, Joe?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I, I was unaware of the twenty-five-foot...
No touch.
On top of the restriction area over there on Palmer Development.
They didn't want to file at all.
Yeah, no.
And under the Wetland Act, we, we didn't have any jurisdiction.
Sure, sure.
But our bylaw, which is more stringent than the Wetland Act, or it wouldn't be a bylaw...
I've read it. I agree.
Has those restrictions.
Yep.
So if Matt's house with an IDA, we should've refused to do it. And, you know, you don't have anything in good faith.
Right.
You don't know what you're dealing with until you, you know, what you're married to, until you're married to one.
Sure, understood.
Those restrictions were put in under our bylaw, and, and even though it's an IDA, but it doesn't have to be recorded. All the other stuff, it's gotta be recorded, but not that. RDAs are just RDAs.
Sure, understood.
And we did it in good faith, and the good faith has not been returned.
No, I, and...
We made promises. We recorded the promises, and it's never got done. And it's dodge, jump, twist, turn. It just drives you crazy.
Now, when I get a...
And the homeowner's not happy. I get emails from him constantly, and voicemails, and personal calls. I don't blame him. It's a blot on his property.
I think, I think the board was, was appropriate in its move. I think it'll be...
But, but he does, he is right. If it wasn't less, as is, Matt would have to live with it.
Right.
Carrero, not Matt Antonio. If it would've been permanent, restricted area, and, and other than cleaning up the debris or whatever, nothing could be done in there.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Okay, guys, you can go home.
Now we have one more.
Are we done?
Who signed up for the cable committee for better or for worse?
What are we gonna approve?
This is the first time in history that we've kept you guys after hours.
That's not the problem. It's ninety-two degrees in here, because they don't have any ventilation, and that heat is just horrible. I've been trying to move these guys right along all, the whole, all night long. I'm having a little trouble. It's not the old guy, it's this building.
Oh, that was the solar place on William Street. I can, I'm gonna check that. I got, I got too much in my folder.
What city, what place on William Street?
No, no, way back. That was the, uh, the wetland, the roadway going way back to the, with the solar panels that's supposed to go. That's, that's already...
Oh, my God.
That was back in last spring.
All right. We need to approve payment for Mac Doog.
Oh, yes. There you are, sir. Signed everything. I thought we paid that bill when it came in, but I looked at the last accountant's report, and we hit the same three hundred and fifty bucks we started with, and we owe them two hundred and seventy.
There you go, Charlie.
Stand up there. Got a bed on you. You saying a bit of...
Yeah. All right. I'll let you think the motion, though, towards your own.
Not quite. Uh, two, uh, one IDA and two NOIs that you're gonna change the date on?
A what?
IDA and two...
Item one. I don't want...